Good evening fellow Americans.
Good evening.
It has come to our attention that kids today live in the real world. The real world can be a fun and beautiful place. We believe the average individual would agree with this. But ask yourself, what is it that makes some people view the world as such a horrible place? It's simple: other people. The way we treat each other is a direct reflection of our character and who we are. Now we've all made mistakes, but it isn't merely a mistake to be bigoted, inconsiderate, and careless individuals. It's a choice, a conscious decision we all have the power to make. Parents, please encourage your humble spirit in your children so that they may exhibit the integrity that you all have instilled in them. It's our time to make a change. We're in this together. In sight of all the things our ancestors have gone through to get us where we are today. In sight of all the wonderful things the future has in store. In sight of all our failures, mistakes, and life's numerous disappointments. Where do you stand? Are you ready for the 24th century? Stay tuned or miss out. Remember, you're in control of your own destiny. Now ask yourselves, are you connected or plugged? Now I want to join me and welcoming back our Congressman Stephen Horst.
You been there, ready? And we'll round out with God and Tyree. That spoken word is the way to open up our town hall. Thank you all for being here. We have a phenomenal expert group of individuals who are here to share information, to continue a dialogue, to start a movement, and to make sure that we're connected right here in Congressional District Four. Let me just give a quick statement of purpose of the forum tonight. It's a two-part discussion. The first part is on the Voting Rights Act. After the decision by the Supreme Court, it's now incumbent upon the Congress to act. And we have individuals who will speak from a historical perspective, from an organizing perspective, and from a legal perspective on the Voting Rights Act. And then we will hear from our guest speaker, Congresswoman Maxine Waters. So let's get started. You ready?
Ready.
Our first panel, I'd like to bring on at this stage at this time Arti Blanco, AFL-CIO Nevada Campaign Director. Give her a round of applause. Former State Senator Joe Neal, the first African-American to serve in Nevada legislature. Attorney Colin Seal, who's just graduated from the fourth civil law. And then finally joining us onstage, Congresswoman Maxine Waters. This is the time for Congress to act, and it's an opportunity for us to actually build on the legacy of the original Voting Rights Act. So I want to get right into the panel. I want to allow our three local individuals to provide some context from their perspective, and then I'm going to introduce our guest speaker, and then we'll continue the conversation. So I'd like to begin with Colin.
All right, good evening again everyone. So one thing I really want people to understand is what the Supreme Court actually did, okay? In their decision that recently came out, it was a county in Alabama that won one of the challenges, one provision of this law. And this provision said that states that in the past has had poll taxes, literacy tests, and all sorts of things that showed a really extreme history of being outright racist. Outright racist. Had to apply for a pre-clearance from the federal government anytime he wanted to make a change in their voting laws. Now, if you look at the effect, right, one of the powerful statements in the dissent to this opinion is, what the Supreme Court ended up saying was, why is calling this law unconstitutional and saying, hey, I have an umbrella on and I'm not wet anymore, so I must not need the umbrella anymore? This Voting Rights Act was our umbrella for many, many years. And we changed the law now, so they no longer have to do a pre-clearance if they want to change these things. And you might say, hey, it's no big deal. We know tons of blacks that voted in deep South states in these last few years, record voter turnout compared to where it's been back in 1965 when this act was enacted. But the reality is that we all know racism has a very different face and a very different tone nowadays. One thing that I really wanted to focus on was, remember when Obama just won this last election? And they had all these polls at the end where they showed the demographics. For Republicans nowadays, they're not really capturing America. They're capturing a very small segment of white male America. And the only way to really increase their rent is to decrease ours. So it's something that we have to be really vigilant about moving forward, and we can't let this idea that states' rights prevail be what happens. Because slavery was state rights. Serugation was about states' rights. Texas is trying to outlaw abortion. That's about states' rights. A lot of the crazy gun laws that we've seen in different states as well is about what's in the states' power to do. So one thing that I really hope that we get out of this panel today is that you see what you need to do in our state to make sure this is not happening here.
Okay, thank you. You know, I am from Texas, but I've been and I worked in the redistricting session in '01. And it was really interesting that all the cases that we filed, they came to redistricting and voting law change, and as we passed these laws in this state, my home state, you know, there has to be this pre-clearance. What does this mean to us here in Las Vegas? I've now been in Las Vegas doing organizing voter registration since 2009, seven, 2006, entering the coffices of '08. And you know, to us, I see this as, this is now gives states free reign to go back and say, you gotta have a voter ID, you need to show proof of citizenship before you even register to vote. You can't register to vote by mail anymore because you have to have photo ID just to register to vote. These states, they are doing anything that they can and to prevent us, I say us, from voting. You know, the one good thing about our Secretary of State in Nevada is that we have online voting now, and you could do it from your iPad and your phone. But if you're gonna vote for the first time, you have to have some type of identification, but you can still register online, you know? But that identification can be an electric bill. But in some of these other states, like in Texas that they changed, you have to only have a state-issued ID. That included a hunter's permit, someone that has a permit or a gun permit can use that to vote. But students enrolled at a state university or state college cannot use their student IDs as a valid identification to vote. Now that is a problem, and that's why this Voting Rights Act, we still need that. And yes, they can't say more African-Americans, more minorities starting to vote for, but that doesn't mean that they're not still trying to oppress us and suppress our voices and our votes. You know, and this is why we have to be activated. And here, firstly, to explain that to some folks that aren't registered or that don't vote. I mean, how many of you, I'm sure many of you probably in this room are registered to vote and participated, and I hope you voted for, I say my Congressman because I know I voted for him. You know, I live in this fourth congressional district and I'm proud to call Congressman Horst my Congressman. You know, but how many of you have also got your family members and neighbors to make sure that they participate? I'm sure, I see a lot of activists in this room, and I'm sure they have. But not only is it about participating in the election, we gotta pay attention when they're in the legislature. Those four, five months that they're in Parkinson City, we've gotta pay attention to these laws that they're proposing. And that's why they have hearings on what these laws are, and that's what's wrong with this Voting Rights Act. The fact that they just struck this down just struck me like, ah, this is a problem. And we gotta continue to fight, it's not over. So, thank you.
Thank you Brother Horst for that introduction, and I'm pleased to appear on this panel today, and also pleased to be in the presence of a woman such as Maxine Waters. And if you don't know Mrs. Waters, and that California contingent represented us and the Congress we didn't have a representative to look after us. I usually refer to them as the little women from California, Nancy Pelosi and all of them. They're tough, they're tough. And Maxine is as tough as her mom does. She even took on CIA. You know, when I was back in what they called the green room before coming out of here, I was referred to as a legend. I don't know exactly what that means, but I assume that it means, and I've been around a while and seen a lot, that they wanted me to share some of that with you. I happened to be in Louisiana at the time when we were working on the Voting Rights Act and the demonstration. You just saw John Lewis. John Lewis is fraternity brother of mine. And we saw him, we got all beat up, but I was kinda like on the other side of that particular picture. I didn't, was not one of those individuals who actually was out there to bring attention to the question of voters' rights at that particular time. We left that to Margaret the King and others to do that. I was on the side of those who were billing the case to go into court. And I just heard one of our panelists talk about the Voting Rights Act. The Voting Rights Act dealt with liberty interests. It was to enforce the 14th and 15th Amendment to the Constitution. Now, we had a law right after the 13th Amendment was passed and freed slaves, so to speak. And that act was known as the First Civil Rights Act, Civil Rights Enforcement Act. It was first time it was passed in 1868, then it was amended in 1870, and then again in 1871. And I guess you probably wondered, said, what the hell happened? In life enforcement? And so that being the time, beginning in the 60s, that we should, we began to think that we should do something to revigorate this act, which had been used to protect the slaves shortly after their freedom. And so that arose an opportunity for people like Margaret the King and others to put forth a confrontation of the issues of the day, such as challenging those who had struck down or refused to enforce the voter rights for those of us who had been former slaves or slaves or ancestors. So Martin led these demonstrations. And Lord knows, I appreciate Martin, but when you on the ground and have to do that work after Martin Lee died, boy, it was rough. It was rough. And you had to go that high for a couple of days there so you wouldn't get killed because we were not allowed to carry guns. And I thought for a while there that initially getting involved, that I might become a black man. And I just had come out of the military, and I had quite a bit of training, hand-to-hand combat and all that stuff, and I would've made a hell of a black family if that had already happened. But I happened to meet two individuals, white men, who were in the field. One of them's name was Frank Dunbar, who was a young lawyer that graduated from the University of Miami, who worked in these cases. And the other one that was hired prior to the Kennedy administration, Governor Powell, a fellow by the name of John Michael Doer. He was a 39-year-old lawyer that hired, was hired from Minnesota, working in his family law firm, and he came in to work. Well, at the time, the Civil Rights Division usually sent out long questionnaires to the FBI to investigate voter right issues. They stayed at home, lawyers stayed in the office in Washington. John Doer decided that, no, he was not going to do this. He would go out and do the investigation himself. And those of us who go out and build the cases, then we were handed over to the FBI to go pick up certain documents because some of us could not be identified because of the fact that it was kinda like a mission impossible. You discovered, then the government had to disown you. But they, John Doer, and if you ever saw, I don't know whether or not you have seen what we call the Island Prize Movement. In Jackson, Mississippi, you saw these two groups, whites and blacks. There were black youth that were shot after the mega average was killed. Led, Margaret the King led a march, a silent march. And after the silent march, you had about 700 black youth decided in Jackson, Mississippi to go downtown on what's called Frizz Street. I think I pronounced that street correctly. Been a long time. They started marching, and then they had the police and the plan began to converge. John Doer was a person, a white person, that you saw walk out and raise his hand to both people, and everybody stopped. I know he was crazy. You see, because one person there tried to get a little time, and over on the side was a youngster with a gun that was living on the shooting. But this did not deter this guy. He worked the field along with us, Ian and Frank. And I just checked on John the other night. John is now 91 years old and lives in Maryland. And also Frank Dunbar is 83, he now lives in Maryland. Frank had worked so long and helped develop these cases, he might ride a married black woman. And he tried to tell her what he had done in the Civil Rights Movement, and she didn't believe him. So he had to bring her out here in order for her to talk to me. And me to tell her that Frank Dunbar had worked in the Civil Rights Movement, that he had done an excellent job. And I said, I thought at that time that he might have been killed, but fortunately he wasn't. And he did a good job in bringing those cases that developed into what we know now as the Voting Rights Act, in which we are now challenged again. Now, Martin, on the other side of this question, was pushing this particular issue, and I think the best way you can describe Martin's action was, I saw the other night, it was a poem by Keith that says that, "When we fear," and this is paraphrasing the poem, "we cease to exist." When we fear, we cease to exist. That means that you have to have the courage to go forward and challenge those things that affect your rights as individuals in this government. If you don't do that, other people take over and to begin to pass laws that affect you.
And Senator, if you could just kinda jump in, that's a point that I was really thinking about. One of the reasons why I went to law school, to become an attorney and practice law, because I reached a point where, working in the community, working for different nonprofit agencies, working for the government, the law is the bottom line. It is the absolute. That's it. The law is what the law is. And when the Supreme Court says what the law is, that's what it is. That's why police officers have to tell you, you have the right to remain silent. They don't say that, that arrest is not gonna be valid. The law is what it is. So one of the things that I think is really important is, we see ourselves as not just voting people in because we like them, but we're voting people in because we want them to do the laws that are gonna dictate our lives. The fact that, I mean, I watched the Eyes of the Prize documentary when I was a little kid, and it seems outrageous that all that bloodshed happened, all that pain and suffering, all those marches, all those demonstrations. I mean, this is our history, these are national holidays, right? And they're gonna overturn the key provision in the states with the most racist histories?
Let me introduce our special guest. I know many of you are here tonight to see her. Congresswoman Waters is considered by many to be one of the most powerful women in American She gained the reputation as a fearless and outspoken advocate for women, children, people of color, and the poor. She currently is serving her 12th term in the House of Representatives. She represents a large part of South Central Los Angeles and the unincorporated areas of Los Angeles County. The 43rd district also includes the diverse cities of Gardena, Hawthorne, Eaglewood, Lawndale, Lometa? Lomita? And Torrance. I'm from Las Vegas, right? As Commissioner, we can just say 89106. Congresswoman Waters currently serves as the ranking member of the House Committee on Financial Services. And for those of you who may not know what that means, you have the chair who is of the majority party, and you have the ranking member who is of the Democratic Party currently. And she is the ranking member that oversees everything from banking to housing issues, credit unions, and she's a champion for the issues that are important to people. She's an integral member of the Congressional Democratic Leadership. She serves as a member of the Steering and Policy Committee for the House Democratic Caucus. She is also a member of the Congressional Progressive Caucus and a past chair of the Congressional Black Caucus. Now, I cannot list all of her legislative achievements, but let me highlight just a few because there's some young people in the room that need to know her legacy. During 14 years in serving in the California State Assembly, she rose to the powerful position of the Democratic Caucus Chair. She was responsible for some of the boldest legislation California has ever seen, including divestment of state pension funds from South Africa during apartheid, landmark affirmative action legislation, the nation's first statewide child abuse prevention training program, and the prohibition of police strip searches for nonviolent misdemeanors. She is a co-founder of the Black Women's Forum, a nonprofit organization of over 1,200 African-American women in the LA area. And in the mid-'80s, she also founded Project Build, working with young people in Los Angeles housing developments on job training and placement. In her current position, she has helped to secure $10 billion in Section 108 loan guarantees to cities for economic and infrastructure development, $50 million appropriation for the Youth Fair Chance Program, and has expanded US debt relief for Africa and other developing nations. She's a champion on minority health disparities, on HIV/AIDS education and awareness, and she has led congressional efforts to mitigate everything from foreclosure to stabilizing the housing prices, which disproportionately has affected many constituents in Congressional District Four. I am extremely honored that she took time out of her schedule during this congressional meeting work period to come to Las Vegas to address the constituents of Congressional District Four. I consider her a great friend and colleague, and I'm learning from her how to be a better representative for you, Congresswoman Maxine Waters.
I'd like to thank Stephen Horst for that very kind and generous introduction. But before I share two remarks with you, Congressman, I consider you and listen to Senator Joe Neal all night long. He reminds me of the Grieu in Africa. He is the historian who can recall incidents and times that are extremely important to the history of his nation. And I want to thank you for your service. I'd like to bow to him, and I think that Van Daal will too. Give him a big round of applause. And I thank all of our panelists that are here on this panel, and then you'll have panelists for a second panel. And it's so extremely important when you have individuals who are willing to share with you their work, their experiences, and their vision about what could happen, what is going on, and what we can all do to be involved, to make change. Thank you panel, very, very much for participating in this. Earlier this evening, I said to a group, you are very fortunate to have this young man as your Congressman. You're fortunate for a lot of reasons. When you have a place such as Las Vegas, Nevada, that's never had a member of Congress who happens to be African-American, and you have someone with the courage and the vision to step up and say, I'm going to do that, knowing that it's never been done before, and that it's not going to be easy. It's gonna take a lot of money, it's gonna take a lot of work, it's gonna take a lot of support. He did that, and he won, and he's in the Congress of the United States of America. Well, thank you, Stephen Horst. And when I was invited to come here to this town hall meeting, I didn't think twice about it because I wanted him to know that we are very pleased that he's in the Congress of the United States, adding to the work of the Congress and the Congressional Black Caucus. And we want him to know that we're here and will always be here to support him and his efforts as long as he's representing his district in this state and doing the kind of job that he's doing in Congress today. I want you to know he hit the ground right because he came with experience. He came from the legislature. He served in the leadership as Democratic Majority Leader, and he brought that experience with him, and it certainly helps when you hit those halls of Congress. Again, I want to thank you. I love town hall meetings. I love town hall meetings. You know, everybody's talking about the social media and how we're connected with each other through Twitter and through Facebook and all of that. But there's nothing like a town hall meeting where people get up and come somewhere and look you in the face, and you can see their expressions, and they can give you some feedback. That's what democracy is all about. Give yourself a big round of applause. So I'd like to share two remarks that I prepared for you because I wanted to try and get a lot in. Uh, first of all, um, as many of you may know, next week, we will be observing the 50th anniversary of the 1965 March on Washington for Jonathan Fregum. As we observe this important anniversary, there is no better time to stop and recognize that the struggle of many Americans to exercise their right to vote is not confined to the past. For decades, we've been fighting for voting rights because voting is the most fundamental element of our democracy. In 1870, African-Americans were given the right to vote through the 15th Amendment. Yet for almost 90 years, many of us were prevented from exercising this very right. Prior to the enactment of the Voting Rights Act, voter suppression was rampant in our country. African-Americans and other minorities were subject to outrageous voting qualifications, where they would have to guess the number of bubbles in a bar of soap, or the amount of jelly beans in a jar before being granted the right to vote. There were discriminatory enforcement of registration rules, poll taxes, and outright racial gender vandalism. These were just some of the devices standing between African-Americans and their constitutionally guaranteed right to vote. The work of those who came before us cannot be forgotten. On Bloody Sunday, nearly 50 years ago, Hosea Williams, my colleague and Congressman Horstberg's colleague, Congressman John Lewis, who you saw on the screen, and many other civil rights leaders, led 600 peaceful, nonviolent protesters attempting to march from Selma to Montgomery to traumatize the need for voting rights protection in Alabama. As they crossed the Edmund Pettus Bridge, they were attacked by state troopers who teargassed and clubbed them, they whipped them, and they beat them. Congressman Lewis was hit in the head with a knife stick and suffered a concussion on that bridge. Seventeen marchers were hospitalized that day. Also in 1965, Dr. Martin Luther King led the Selma march that focused Americans' attention on the unconscionable inequity that existed in our voting system. He moved President Lyndon B. Johnson to work with Congress to achieve passage of the Voting Rights Act. With the stroke of a spin, President Johnson signed it into law on August 6, 1965, making the Voting Rights Act the law of the land. President Johnson declared that day, "This landmark legislation was a triumph of freedom as huge as any victory that has ever been won on any battlefield." When the act was passed, African-American voter registration drives were met with extreme, sometimes violent, resistance. But we persevered and registered in large numbers. The Voting Rights Act put in place sweeping new protections for minority voters in the American South who had been disenfranchised for generations by Jim Crow laws, protections that are in serious jeopardy today after the Supreme Court recently invalidated Section 4 of the act. The decision by the court is essentially under the critical protections of Section 5, as well as Section 5 is the pre-clarance section of the Voting Rights Act that says states that must submit any changes to election or election-related laws to the United States Department of Justice before those laws can be adopted. The Supreme Court's decision was a step backwards for civil rights in our country, make no doubt about it. The court's ruling has now placed the power to guarantee equal access to the ballot in the hands of Congress. In 2006, Congress reauthorized the Voting Rights Act on a bipartisan basis, making the determination that Sections 4 and 5 were not only still relevant, but essential to protecting all Americans' right to vote. Now, Congress has a moral obligation to restore Section 4 of the Voting Rights Act. President Obama has called on Congress to pass legislation ensuring every American has equal access to the polls and every eligible voter is able to cast a ballot without limitation and restriction. Republicans encouraged by the Supreme Court's decision have already introduced legislation to limit access to the ballot. Already since this decision, in 30 states, more than 55 different measures have been introduced and considered over the last several weeks. Republicans are pushing restrictive voter ID legislation in states around the country that will make it more difficult for people to make their voices heard. The latest is a bill signed into law earlier this month by North Carolina Governor Pat McCrory. This extreme law attempts to prohibit parents of college students from claiming them as dependents when they file their taxes if the student registered to vote anywhere other than their parents' homes. Now, you know what that's all about. Students in colleges and universities in town who registered to vote and exercised that power, they're trying to limit that and threatening the parents to say, "You can't claim as dependent on your taxes." All their clever in their actions. And they think of every way possible to limit our participation. Under the new law, those same students would be required to provide a government-issued photo identification card at the polls. Student ID cards would not count. In 2012, we saw voters around the country stand in line for hours in some precincts so that their vote would be counted. They cast their ballots and sent a simple but powerful message. "We're here, our voice is matter. We must rededicate ourselves to fight for freedom." Let's stand with voters who waited hours to cast their ballots and who were intimidated at the polls. Now, the idea that the Supreme Court could come up with this law undermining Sections 4 and 5 at a time when we've experienced what was going on around this country in various states, where these voting lines were very long, where people were being intimidated, asked questions about whether or not they'd ever been incarcerated and whether or not they had felony records, questioning their right to vote. In some cities where they were trying to limit the right to vote, not only did people stand in line for hours, they purposely didn't have enough polling places and booths for them to vote in. But yet, in face of all of this, the Supreme Court did what it just did. In 2012, we saw voters around the country not only stand in line for hours in some precincts so that their vote would be counted. They cast their ballots and they sent that simple message over and over again. The new voter ID laws and other restrictions have the potential to disenfranchise millions of eligible voters. Minorities, poor people, seniors and students are among those that will be impacted the most. Why in 2013 are we returning to the days of limiting the vote rather than encouraging it? How can we forget how far we've come as a nation? These laws are designed to restrict a specific population from voting, much like what we saw in the 50s and the 60s. These covert tactics will not prevail as long as we continue to speak out against the injustice of voter suppression laws. We must send a very clear message. The right to vote must be preserved. The right to vote must be protected. The right to vote must remain the cornerstone of our democracy. And that right to vote must be for all Americans. For our democracy. For our democracy, we must protect and defend the Voting Rights Act. Ladies and gentlemen, a little bit of that background to help us to remember the history of the struggle for the right to vote and the right to participate in this democracy. When I was in North Carolina just a few weeks ago, the people, led by the NAACP and some other groups, decided they were not going to take it sitting down. That legislature had started to introduce and pass not only anti-voting rights bills, but all kinds of other bills that would, in many ways, take away the safety net from young children, from seniors, from richers, on and on and on. They had just gone right in that legislature. But guess what was happening in North Carolina? They created something called "Mortal Monday." And every Monday, they go to the Capitol. And the last convention at the Capitol, they had over 9,000 people. The people of North Carolina got up. They organized. And they made a determination, "We're not going to take it sitting down." And they're pushing back, and they're fighting. They're organizing, they're working. And that's what we've all got to do in this country. It is not simply about voting rights. You're going to hear from the second panel about everything from profiling, zero tolls in our schools, making criminals of our children, perhaps. You're going to hear about mandatory minimum sentencing that have locked up young people in this country for small amounts of crack cocaine while the big drug dealers in this country get away with fancy lawyers. And so, it's not enough. It's not enough to simply email somebody or to get on your social media and talk about how bad it is. And did you see what happened yesterday? And did you hear what they said? You got to get up and do something. You got to belong to something. You got to make sure the community is registered to vote. You got to make sure that these young people that you've sent off to college don't think that this is old-school stuff. This is as new-school as it gets. This just happened with the Supreme Court a few weeks ago. And so, for those who think that the threats that we're describing is something that happened a long time ago, and no matter what they do, it really can't happen now. It's up to you to tell them the truth, to let them know that our freedom is at stake. And unless we organize and work to challenge it, we can lose a lot of the sacrifices that were made by courageous individuals who gave their lives for us to be able to participate in this democracy. So let us get on with the second panel. Thank you for being here. Support this congressman and get to work. Thank you, darling.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Now you know why they describe her as fearless and strong. We want to take a few questions for this panel.
How can the Congress combat the suppression of voting rights in states like North Carolina? Now, you just said, "We have to take action," and I totally agree with you, but I was kind of asking if there's any strategy to change the law.
You said Congress would go first and operate in local.
I alluded to, and you will hear talked about for quite some time until we get back in session and we get started on some of these significant issues, the fact that we have to reauthorize the Voting Rights Act pretty much in the way that we did, um, you know, a few years ago. We have to overcome what they did in the Supreme Court, basically. And really, we're looking for a bipartisan effort. It was bipartisan before when we reauthorized it. And now, we're going to have to work very hard because Democrats are not in the majority in the House of Representatives. We have the majority on the Senate side, uh, but on the House side, it is a lot more difficult these days. We have a new element in Congress. They're known as Tea Parties. And they think differently. As a matter of fact, there are problems within, in the Republican Party because there are disagreements within the Republican Party because some of the action and direction that the very, very conservative, right-wing Tea Party members are taking is jeopardizing, uh, their own party. And so, we're going to have to work very hard. I don't know if we can be successful in bringing them around this time because of this new group, but we're going to work, work, work. And you got to watch what we do in Congress. It is not going to be easy, but it's not going to be quiet. It is not going to be the gentle lady from California or the gentle man from Nevada. We're going to be talking to each other in some strong terms because we've got to get this done. And I dare say that we need the support of the people. The people have to show up. They have to call. They have to tie up the lines of Congress. They have to write. They have to let the Congress, the members of the Congress know that this is extremely important, and they are paying attention. And they want to get this done.
And if I could add to that, and I'll ask our local panel, just to frame it, so we have the Voting Rights Act in 1965, reauthorization, um, again, uh, and then recently in 2006. In 2006, it was authorized in the House by a vote of 390 to 33. And the Senate approved 98 to 0. That was after weeks of hearings, more than 15,000 pages of committee reports that demonstrated the need for Section 5. What the Supreme Court did was, you know, attack Section 4, which subsequently threw out Section 5. And so, our job now is to come up with a new formula for how voting rights would be applied. And the question I have for the panel is, what is the opportunity in that? Because in the past, it's been just on those southern states and Arizona. But we have seen these type of voter suppression tactics here in Nevada. The only difference is we have a democratically-controlled legislature that killed a lot of these bills. And if they had their opportunity, we would see some of the same egregious bills like you see in North Carolina and other places. So how can we make sure that whatever the new Voting Rights Act is and that new formula applies to protection for voters in Nevada? Artie?
What you have to understand about the Voting Rights Act, it is enforcing Amendments 14 and 15 of the Constitution. That applies to everybody across the country. So that's what we have to do. And the reauthorization, I think, is, is very simple. And if those of you who had an opportunity to look at the 14th and 15th Amendment, they have, in the Section 2 of those amendments, uh, in particular, Section 2 of the 15th Amendment, it says that, uh, Congress has the power to enforce this amendment. Congress has the power to enforce this amendment. And I'm just paraphrasing, not saying it exactly. But what you have to do is to have Congress just reauthorize the enforcement of the amendment because, me and my daughter, I'm thinking about my daughter and I, we debated on this particular issue. Because it's, it's enforcing the denial and the abridgement of the right to vote. The Voting Rights Act concentrated on the denial, but not the abridgement. So Roberts, being the Supreme Chief Justice, as he was, saw that in the Act, uh, Section, subsection 4B, in a rule that our Constitution would apply to everything, it's knocked everything out. And so, what Congress can do, can do, is to just reapply that act to the abridgement of rights. Not only the denial of rights, but the abridgement of rights. And I think that will solve the problem and also make it apply all across the country. And you do that by addressing it to the 14th and 15th Amendment.
Um, so the opportunity that we have is that demographics have changed in this country. And certain states were not included- And certain states were not included in the Voting Rights Act because our demographics were such at that time. So the opportunity here is that we have changing demographics in this state. We've seen the numbers change. But we have more than just more constituency. You know, we've got multiple communities that we now need to make sure that all their rights, that everyone's rights are protected. So the opportunity here in the state of Nevada, and as the Congressman said, yes, these bills in the state legislature, the bad bills, were killed because of the Democratic power. But we've had that Democratic power in the legislature since, what, 2006? Then our voting efforts have changed the laws as it is because we still have to control in the legislature. But we still have a Republican governor. In fact, there was a bill that was passed in this last session that would have changed the registration deadline to the weekend, up to that Friday before Election Day. Right now, you have to register to vote 30 days before the election. There was a bill that was passed in both the State House and the Assembly, I'm sorry, and the Senate. And it was sent to the governor's desk. And people can register until Friday, and they can do it online up until Friday. And it added an additional Saturday for us to vote early. But what did the governor do? He vetoed that bill. And those are the things that we have to pay attention to. And the opportunity is there for Nevada to continue to keep these laws. But if we don't keep control of the legislature, those bills will pass. If we do not have a governor that will sign these bills that actually opens the process to allow for more participation, you know, then that is where we will be. And we have to continue to watch these and understand that these laws that are being passed and what we're fighting for, the modernization bills. You know, we are one of many states that still do not have these changed. Many states have same-day voter registration. Why don't we? We're a transient city. We should be able to change that. But looking at the opportunities that we are, our demographics have changed, and we are a larger community that we must all protect all of our rights together as a community.